All right, let's do it.
Hello, and welcome to Gladstone Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, November the 19th, 2019. We're at 525 Portland Avenue, Gladstone, Oregon. Call to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langston?
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Malakai?
Here.
Commissioner Poole?
Here.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Here.
Chair Rowlett?
Here. Let's salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Tonight, we're-- first thing we'll do is a consent agenda. And then we'll have a little couple minutes if any of the public want to testify about anything not on the agenda. We have a card to fill out. Then we'll go to the regular agenda, which will include planning reports, and then a public hearing for Z-0425-19-D. And then more business from the public, if anybody wants to talk about anything that they didn't testify during the public hearing. So if you want to testify during the public hearing for the property at 420 West Arlington, we have a card to fill out. And so we can know who testified and whatnot. And then we'll have business from the planning commission, and we'll adjourn. So let's start with the consent agenda.
I'd like to just thank staff for getting the business from the public at the beginning and the end. But mention that we do actually have it misspelled in both places.
We just lost a couple s's there. I think everybody knows.
Thank you for pointing that out again.
It's cut and paste. That's why it happened twice. Anything else, commissioners, on the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Malakai?
I second.
Mr. Lang-- or Commissioner Langston. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no or nay. None opposed. Consent agenda passes. Does any of the public wish to testify or bring up or talk about anything other than our public hearing? So we'll start with the regular agenda, which is the planning reports for October 2019.
Good evening. So in front of you, you have the monthly report for October 2019. As the year progresses, we have to abbreviate the months. So you have noticed that the columns are getting smaller. But for October, there were four customer contacts at the counter. That is when someone comes in and has questions for planning staff. There were 68 phone calls and emails with residents with questions. There were 10 building permits with land use review. No pre-application conferences and administrative decisions. There were three. There were two land use compatibility statements and one sign permit that was reviewed administratively.
Can I ask about that?
Yeah.
What is a land use compatibility statement?
When the state of Oregon requires planning staff to review whether a use is allowed on a particular property.
Okay.
So they may have a permit for the treatment of stormwater to comply with DEQ requirements. And they're not going to issue that permit unless they have assurances that the use that is taking place on the property is allowed.
Okay. Thank you.
So that is a land use compatibility statement. Assuring that the land use is compatible with the zoning.
So it's in October, it shows a building permit for 165 East Exeter for the triplex that was already built. Why does it say building permit for that?
When we review whether it's the C of O, or whether it's a remodel, or when it's the changing of HVAC systems, or
Okay.
different things, there is a review that takes place.
Okay, I get it.
So, and these are just those that came in that required land use review?
I do have a question, not necessarily on this, but relating to this. New single-family residents in terms of building permits. Do ADUs require building permits? They do.
Okay.
Really, just if you add in square footage, pretty living space, pretty much you're there.
Yeah, when it's living space, you definitely need to ensure that all of the building code requirements are met.
Okay.
For safety.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion that we accept the planning report.
I second it.
Commissioner Malakai and Commissioner Natalie Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no or nay. None opposed. Accepted. All right. Are you ready for a public hearing? We are going to have a public hearing, and I'm going to read a whole bunch of stuff in my monotone, monotonous voice that we have to read for legal reasons. So the public hearing is filed Z-0425-19-D, construction of a new 2124 square foot building on vacant lot adjacent to an existing residence located at 420 West Arlington. Property owners are utilizing space on adjacent non-conforming lot for parking on tax lot 420 West Arlington. Lots 2, 2E, 19DD, number 8200, number 8300, John Platt's applicant. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report. Questions, if any, by the hearing body for staff will then open the public hearing for testimony. And time will be limited as follows. Applicants first. Persons in favor of the application next. Persons opposed to the application next. Rebuttal from the applicants. We will then close the public hearing, and no other comments will be heard from the public or the applicants. Final comments by staff, questions of staff, if any, by the commission, then discussion deliberation by the commission. A decision may be made by the planning commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a date and time certain. Any party may request a continuance of this hearing, or may request the record remain open for seven days. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of the date you receive. A party would be anybody that testifies, or anybody that's on the application. And then when I'm done, if anybody has any questions, you can ask too.
Or submit it.
Yeah, any-- it has your name, or business, or whatever, has to be in something here, or you need to testify to be a party. Or be part of the staff, or as the commission is a party to the application as well. If you wish to speak, please come forward to the microphone. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, or just your name, but we do need your address for records. In making a decision, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified by the staff report and are available in this room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria, or other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note, if you fail to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal that issue to the city council, or the land use board of appeals. Unless the commission is making a recommendation to the city council, in this case, the decision will be final for this particular application, unless appealed. The commission's decision will be the city's final decision in this matter unless appealed to the city council. So the next step would be to appeal to the city council. An appeal must be filed within 15 days, and in accordance with Chapter 17.92 of the Gladstone Municipal Code. Failure by the applicant to raise constitution, or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity-- Say that 10 times-- --to allow the commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contact, which is contact outside of the context of this hearing. Bias, so if you have a problem with something that's biased, or conflicts of interest. If your cousin owns the place, or your brother or father, that could be a conflict of interest. Have members of the commission visit the site. Let's start at the end, and just go down to the other end.
I have-- I've had no contact, I have no bias, and no conflict of interest, and I've not visited the site.
I have visited the site several times, and I don't know if this would be any kind of-- Last year, I did some work with State Farm, and the person who was handling the estate, the people who owned that property, I renewed their insurance. Other than that, that's it.
So do you think that's going to preclude you from making a decision?
No, I just wanted to be clear that I knew about it. Yeah.
Okay.
I did visit the site, and as far as ex parte, at the beginning of this meeting, we were discussing with staff about one of the special conditions being out of date.
And I did visit the site, and I'm familiar with the area. I don't have any bias either way, negative or positive. I have no conflict of interest to report. And, yeah, I stopped today and took a look at it.
Yeah, I've stopped by a couple of times, and obviously been to the site. I haven't had any ex parte contacts, and I have no bias in this decision.
I visited the site twice. I have no bias or conflict of interest. I am guilty of having a conversation with Commissioner Malakai about the length of the approval, if it was correct.
Okay. I think that's good. It's really not directly relevant to the application, but point taken, though. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? Seeing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any planning commission member's ability to participate? This is part-- the hearing is open, so we did open the hearing. We didn't open the public part of the testimony yet, but the hearing is in session. Staff will now present the staff report.
Good evening. Again. So the site is located next to 420 West Arlington Street. And it's important because currently it's a vacant lot. And so that's why the 420 West Arlington Street comes into play. It also comes into play because it is essential when reviewing the application for the vacant lot due to the parking requirements. So both of those tax lots are part of the review. The vacant parcel is outlined in blue there, and it is zoned C2, Community Commercial District. It is 0.12 acres in size. Currently used as a garden and landscaping. The property to the east is an existing non-conforming residential property at 420 West Arlington. And it is in the 0.02% chance of flooding. That is also known as the 500-year floodplain. Because it's 500-year floodplain, there are no floodplain permits required. But just FYI, it is-- there is a 0.02% chance of being flooded on an annual basis. Notice was sent out, and it was sent to all of the department heads and adjacent property owners within 250 feet of the subject property. Comments were received from the Public Works Department, and incorporated into the special conditions that are in the staff report. The other departments did not provide comments.
Nothing from the public or property owners?
The only comments received were from Public Works.
Tammy, can you make sure we follow up with Lisa Byer?
FYI, they are aware of that, and they will do a better job of making any comments. If they-- they are currently assuming if they don't send anything, they have nothing to comment on, but I have told them that you would like to have them comment.
Yeah, like even if they just say they don't comment, that at least lets the public know they saw.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
I concur with Commissioner Malakai.
As stated above, the property is currently vacant. There are services adjacent to the site that can be extended to serve the property. The plan submitted by the applicant shows the installation of approximately 771 square feet of landscaping, which equals 15% of the total 5,000 square foot site. And the proposed building rendered here, you can see, has an assortment of building materials and design features, including the windows and height requirements that meet the Gladstone Municipal Code. With such a small parcel, it is of note that the C2 zoning does not have any setbacks from the size property boundary. And so the building is right on the property line there. It does, however, have setbacks for parking from adjacent properties that you'll see have the required landscaping on the next slide. But in this diagram that you have in front of you, I wanted to call out that there is a trash enclosure at the rear of the building. There are stripings for pedestrian circulation on the site. The parking, as was mentioned, is being provided primarily on the adjacent lot, with a handicap spot on the primary lot. And there is a recorded shared parking agreement for those extra parking spaces. They are within the required distance of the primary entrance of the site. And because one is residential in use and one is commercial, their peak time of use is considered to be different. And so they can share the parking. They're also owned in the same ownership, and so the parking agreement is allowed per Chapter 17 of the code to meet the parking requirements. You'll notice that there is access onto West Arlington Street. And the sidewalk and driveway will have to meet the Gladstone Public Works requirements and ADA accessibility requirements.
Did I hear you correctly that this same owner owns both parcels?
Yeah.
Okay.
Question about the Public Works requirement you mentioned. So I know that Jim usually tries to make sure we have just one cutout. Is he making that requirement here, or is he allowing them to have separate cutouts?
You mean apron?
Apron.
Well, from the road.
Yeah.
These are two separate lots.
Right.
Two separate uses. And so there are two separate access points. The shared parking does make it odd, because two of the parking spaces would have a separate access. But it is also the primary access for the residents.
The only question I have about that would be, it's still two separate tax lots, and they're under current ownership, one, you know, single ownership. But what if this owner decides to sell one of the tax lots? Then that would put that building, one or other, in non-compliance.
It-- there's an agreement that says we'll be binding with property on-- oh, wait. Yeah, binding with properties unless both parties agree to terminate in writing.
Okay. I missed that. Thank you.
Yeah. There is a shared parking agreement that is recorded in the Register of Deeds office.
So it's part of the title, basically?
It goes with the property.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
It is a deed restriction, essentially. Yeah. The proposed landscaping plan is on the screen here, and also in front of you. It shows the landscape buffer between the parking areas and the residential properties that are located behind and to the side. It shows the bike racks that is a requirement of the code for two bicycles. It also shows the stormwater drainage that is part of the requirements protruding the stormwater on site from new land development. Additional stormwater drainage and access will have to be approved from the Public Works as it moves forward in the process. But the preliminary plans, comments from Public Works, have been included in the special conditions. The notes that are in red up on the slide were provided by the applicant. And based on conversation with the applicant, it is my understanding that these are site-level plans, that the concrete landscaping plans that will have these notes associated with the plans will come in when the construction plans are developed. And so while these are not notes on the sheet that you have in front of you, they will be incorporated into the landscaping plan that will be reviewed prior to the certificate of occupancy being approved. One of those special conditions. Of note is that the property owners are going to be monitoring the maintenance of the landscaping, that there is a provision for irrigation, and that the topsoil is-- 18 inches of topsoil is placed on the site during the construction and in preparation for planting. And so that will reduce any compaction from the construction equipment going across the topsoil. And the applicant did modify the plant list to remove a prohibited species from being included. And those revised plans were submitted on the 3rd of October. So the special conditions of the staff recommendation include lighting, so that it complies with the dark skies, while also illuminating the pedestrian access for the building. Parking, it requires the shared parking agreement between the two adjacent lots. The driveway will have to have ADA-approved curb ramps to allow a wheelchair or other ADA mode to access it. Signage, they did not include the dimensions of the signs or plans for the signs with their design review application. And so a separate sign permit will have to be reviewed by staff in-- prior to the installation of any signs. Landscaping, again, a final landscaping plan will need to be submitted to staff. And the ADA access, sanitary sewer, water, storm drainage, erosion control, construction plans, and pre-construction conference were all reviewed by Public Works and edited and updated to meet their concerns as well. The-- if any of the plans submitted with the design review application should change, the applicant will need to inform staff, and if it takes it out of compliance with the Gladstone Municipal Code, it will be-- it will null your decision. And if it significantly changes at all, it will null your decision. And so just that should be aware, the applicant should be aware of that. And then, based on the Gladstone Municipal Code and the materials that were submitted, staff recommends that the commission approve the design review application. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can we take a look at the render again? Which side is actually facing Arlington? Is it the one on the right side? Is this the side facing Arlington?
Arlington is the street that you see.
Okay.
In front of it.
So the one thing we'll want to make sure to cover, because of the way the traffic is on Arlington, we'll want to make sure that the exit road has good visibility for people pulling out. The glass, I'm okay with, but the brick, I'm a little concerned it might block the visibility of the traffic pulling out.
Of the driveway.
And that brings me to my question. Knowing how congested that area already is, was there a traffic study done?
There was not a traffic study.
That's going to impact that area quite significantly. It did once we had the 24-hour fitness and everything else. That area gets pretty congested.
Okay.
Following along with Commissioner Malakai's question, a parking space right in front of that building, adjacent to the ingress egress ramp, would also provide-- could cause traffic issues where you can't see around the car to get-- see who's coming eastbound on that, on Arlington.
Are you referring to the parking space over by the residence?
No. Well, not so much as the one directly in front of the building is for cars going this way on Arlington. If you have a car in front, it could block the vision of people coming out of it. A lot of businesses don't allow parking right directly in front of, adjacent to an ingress egress ramp.
So I think in general, what we're saying is we need to make sure that area has good visibility coming in and out, because the traffic there, they don't really go very slow. And like we-- I stopped by there tonight, and there was just a ton of traffic. I decided to go a different direction just to leave the area, just to avoid crossing the traffic there.
So everything is within code, correct? So you triple-checked in the parking, the visibility, and all that stuff is within the code?
I did.
Is there any requirement for access, like for their path of egress, as far as getting from parking to the front? And is the--
Yes, there is. And that's--
But there's slotted lines on it.
The--
And so those--
The slotted lines, yes.
Per their instructions, so maximum slope in that area cannot exceed 2% then, as they come to the front? What about getting to the-- Is there-- What about getting to the, is there, do they have any responsibility for access to the other, the adjacent property?
From a pedestrian?
Yeah, so if someone were to park, let's say if they wanted to use that handicap spot and they wanted to get to the other property, do they, do they still have to provide that, the same accessibility to the other property?
Because the other property is an existing residence and not part of the design review, other than the...
Just that they're sharing the parking lot there.
The parking requirements. There, the driveway of the other property should be looked at as far as ADA accessibility to make sure that the curb ramps on the other side of that driveway, because it is in conjunction with this, that may come into play to make sure that it meets the city's requirements. But as far as there is a sidewalk that connects those two additional...
That sidewalk would have to be in compliance?
It would have to be in...
Pretty nice sidewalk, actually.
It's hard to tell, because the, I'm sure, well, they're showing that ADA path leading to a door, but I'm not seeing a door on the floor plan at that, at that location. They're showing the front door in the front of the building, that ADA...
What's this right here?
It's hard to say. Normally you'd have a swing if that was a door, unless it...
A double door?
Well, you know, you would have a swing.
It is on C3, shows the door where the sidewalk ends.
Yeah, but on Sheet A1.1, Architectural Plan, it's just showing storefront.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
AS1.1 shows the swing out of the door.
Yeah, well, that's...
Okay, that's right, in the back.
I'm showing on A, on Sheet A1.1, where it's the floor plan.
Yeah, it's the 1.2 on that page, at the top.
1.2.
Up here. It's that door.
That's, I think that store, that's going to be there.
If you look at C3, though, that's the one that is right here, connected to it.
I see, I see what you mean.
Well, I think the intent for that back store is when that's for deliveries, loading.
And the garbage.
Yeah, and garbage, yeah. I'm not saying, I'm just pointing out whatever, what I see, that's all.
That's great.
It seems like they would have to maintain that ADA accessibility all the way to the front of that entry. So you're probably going to have to look at grades with that, with the entrance of that driveway. But that's for someone else to figure out.
I guess we're mentioning that we're updating the extension timeline.
When you look at the actual floor plan, they're not...
Special Condition 1 will be modified to reflect a coordinate 1498, the two-year approval.
Instead of 1.
Instead of 1, yes. That's odd, that it's shown as a door on all the plans except for A1.1.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the thing, if you're going to go for more detail, you're going to go to A1.1, and that doesn't show you anything. There's a, there's a cut through at 3.8, or Detail 1 on A3.1, but I don't think we have that sheet. Yeah.
It may be in the chart.
Yeah, it's just, it might, I mean, just where they're at in design development, you know, but...
That's great, thank you.
I would imagine, though, you'd want that side door, because it's going to get tricky at that, as you get closer to the street. Because even looking at the grades in that area, it drops considerably to maintain the 2%.
Do you have any other questions for staff?
Just clarification, because obviously the flow down in that neighborhood is a concern, and parking's a concern. How many parking spots do we have total? We have six. And they have an agreement to share five?
Yes.
And it, okay.
Three in the back and two up front.
Yeah, there's two parking spots in the front. Essentially, probably going to be overflow parking for the others.
Well, the agreement lists five spaces on the back of the home. And as long as we have an adequate number, and we don't have an issue there, I'm fine. But I want to make sure that we're not going to end up with more parking problems or flow problems. Have any, any questions or concerns about the building itself or the layout? I think it's...
Is there any issue with that ADA path being in that driveline? Do they, do they have to provide a minimal width for a car? And I know they have to maintain, and can that four feet of the ADA encroach in that? If they were to...
I am not sure what the Public Works requirements are, but I would say no, the ADA, or the pedestrian marking would not be included in the required travel path length. Based on my understanding.
So, actually, your question has got my attention now. Where are the five parking spaces in the back of the house?
Yeah, because I don't see five.
There's three, so the...
You've got the right number.
The right number, it's just not the right wording.
Right. And there was a, they originally recorded a parking sharing agreement for two spots. And I said, that's not enough, that does not meet the requirements. And so they updated it, and I saw five, I missed the word "back." There are additional parking spaces behind that residential building. It is unlikely that anyone would use those to access the ICSB. But the plans clearly show the two in front of the building and then the three in the rear of the building.
So I would say that on the off chance that this ever has to go with the property, let's try to make sure it gets updated to reflect the reality of what's being proposed.
Okay.
Anything else? The applicants may now present testimony and arguments. Are the applicants present? Do you have anything to add, or...
John Platts, the 420 West Arlington is our address. Can I go up to the screen?
Sure.
Can you guys still hear me? One of the concerns was the parking, this is actually only 18 feet over, so you have an additional 32 feet of vision prior to the egress spot.
Yeah, we're not worried about that direction, it's the other direction.
I thought one of you had mentioned backing out of these spots would cause an issue.
My concern was for traffic headed eastbound, I believe, on Arlington.
Coming this way.
This way, for a car trying to pull out to see them coming, if there's somebody parked directly in front of the building.
So one of your customers...
On-street parking.
Yeah, yeah, so one of your customers coming out, just making sure they have visibility of that oncoming traffic.
Yeah, this is only like...
To turn east, coming out.
The brick wall pass, so actually it's almost perfectly aligned. Because the doors actually swing to the same, if the door were open, it would cause the same block view as the brick wall would. And it is a 25 mile an hour zone. Now granted, they probably don't do that, but that is what the law states. So that would be the only, only note of mention I have.
Okay. My name is Hong Wu, I'm the applicant too. We do have a door here.
No, that's, sorry. It's where the ADA, there is a door.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
This is ingress right there.
Okay, there is a door.
For the ADA compliant.
Okay.
I'm not sure how it got off there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go correct that, right there.
Yeah, yeah.
AS1.1.
This is a stupid question.
Yeah, yeah.
This is probably a stupid question, but, you know, he's talking about the slope coming down there. Do you have, like, those bumps at the bottom of that, to like, stop wheelchairs from continuing to roll?
You mean at the end of the, the pathway, yeah? I'm not sure that, I didn't know we had to do that, but we can.
I'm not sure that it's required, I'm just wondering if you do.
Well, the idea, the intent would be that if it's, you don't exceed, if you don't, you shouldn't be exceeding 2%, like, they won't let you exceed 2%. So, you know, that, that...
If it's a requirement, we'll meet it.
Yeah, exactly, so that should prevent people from rolling.
We don't want anybody rolling off the street either.
Yeah, yeah.
I will, we will update the parking sharing plan to make sure the language is correct, it's accurate, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have to commend you guys, the plans, they look awesome. Like, the plans you have here, they're very detailed, I was really happy to see them.
Thank you very much.
May I ask what, do, is it just one business that's going to be occupying the building? Okay, and what is the, the industry?
We collect, freeze, and store animal semen.
Okay.
It won't be a high-traffic...
Actually, most of our business is done off-site. This is, there'll be like, one or two clients a week, that's about it. It's very low volume of clients.
Sure.
We go to where the animals are. We can't bring them to us.
Okay.
They're a multinational company, too, by the way. So, does any of the public wish to speak in favor of the application? Anyone? Does anyone want to speak against the application? Does anyone wish to provide neutral testimony? No one testified in the above three, so the applicant wouldn't need to provide rebuttal testimony.
They can if they want to.
But you could if you want. Does the staff have anything to add or wish to recap?
There seemed to be some hesitant about a traffic study. And that was not anything that the Public Works recommended. And often, in the code, it clearly says that Public Works can recommend one if deemed necessary. Because most of the clients and most of the business is taking place off-site, there, and the parking is in close proximity, there was not a traffic study requested of the applicant.
Does, any member of the commission have questions regarding clarification of the testimony to this point? So do we want to talk about any things that need to be clarified, or anyone?
I would just say, I know you've taken notes, and we'll get that language straight so when we make, if someone makes a motion, that it's clear. I do want to thank Commissioner Malachi for bringing up the need for correspondence from the Fire Department or other entities. It's pretty obvious, they just built a shopping center across the street, and there's, the Fire Department's certainly got water there, but it really helps for us to just know they've had their eyes on it and that we've got our paperwork and our decision reflects that, so, good.
So if, would the commission like to vote to close the public testimony portion of this hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, or...
I'll second.
Commissioner Poole and Commissioner Malachi, the public portion of testimony in this hearing is closed. Now it's time for deliberation. Are there any further questions of staff from the commission?
Can you clarify which changes you've made to the special conditions so far?
The parking sharing agreement shall be updated to reflect what is being proposed, including three spaces behind the existing non-conforming residence and two parking spaces on the street side. The Special Condition 1 will be modified to show the coordinate 1498, the extension of a two-year, the approval shall remain valid for two years. The signs will stay the same. The ADA access will confirm with the Public Works whether there is any additional impediments needed, or any, if there is...
The spaces there to accommodate.
If there is space to accommodate them.
And actually, I think the plan's going to be updated to reflect that door as well, right?
Right, right. The, there is no off-street parking in front of the building, but the site visibility, while it is not a road, should be confirmed to meet City of Gladstone requirements. And then, that is, those are the notes I have. Do you have...
Thank you.
I think the ADA issue's handled there.
Right.
Detail.
Any other thoughts?
Discussion, discussion. Anybody want to make a speech? Anything? If we're finished, we...
I think we've pretty well covered most of everything.
Or approval or denial?
Mr. Chairman, I move that with the discussed changes that the county planner has taken on, that we approve application number Z0425-19-D.
I'll second.
Commissioner Pat Smith and Commissioner Malachi, any further discussion? Please call a roll.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Rollet?
Yes. So, congratulations. And then there's like, a waiting period of so many days or something?
Fifteen days before appeal.
Days for comments or, you know, appeals and stuff, I wouldn't think there would be. And that's a good-looking building you're going to put there.
Being an improvement.
Yes.
Are you going to do like I do? Will you do like I always do and get started about Christmas week? Yeah, you get started when you can, but it's a nice-looking building, it should be a good addition, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next is any business from the public? Tom, or anyone wish to talk about anything, anything you want? Apparently not.
Just one of those nights.
And any business from the commission?
I have none.
I can't think of anything right now.
Nope.
Just a quick comment, we have a vacancy here, and I understand in December they'll make a decision. So right now, is there like, an open posting, or is it...
Currently, that position is going to remain open until the council makes the decision. Of any applicants received in December will become effective January.
So I guess his question is, are they still accepting applicants?
Yes, through December 3rd, applications are...
Have we received a lot so far?
We haven't received a lot, but we have received an applicant, one or two applications.
And the applications available on the city website?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Good, all right, thank you.
Motions?
No, I just have a comment. I noticed that, maybe a little concerned when you came in about, I hope we've done this right.
right." And it'd be nice if we kind of incorporated this into our beginnings, is the questions we ask, we're kind of obligated to ask. It's not that we think you're doing anything you shouldn't be, or trying to skirt anything, but we have a responsibility to peek under the covers on all this stuff and make sure that we've done our part as you've done your part. So again, you did a nice job, it was a good presentation, and it'll be a good building. But we ought to tell our applicants that, that, you know, they're not in here to be grilled and skewered. They're here just to make sure we're all in agreement on what all... No, not that, but, you know, trepidation can be pretty obvious on a person's face.
Good, anything else?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mal... Commissioner Malachi and Commissioner Poole, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no or nay. Adjourn.